That's good.
You got lucky there. You got really lucky.
Ah, please. I guess we're ready. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just two of them could take an hour.
Try to get it clear so you can almost kind of finagle with your other number two. Try to cover some of the tree cutting. All right. If we get everyone to take our seats, we can get started this evening. The first item is a series of public hearings regarding bond issues. So we'll open the 6:30 public hearing dealing with a $1 million bond authorization for the demolition of abandoned properties to address blight. Anyone wishing to speak to this bond authorization, please sign up with the city sheriff, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, the first speaker?
First speaker tonight from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Uh, the, uh, bond authorization, I would ask that you pass this. Uh, this amount has been pretty much the same amount we've done, uh, every time for, uh, the, um, demolition of abandoned properties and blight. Um, I would also add that even though some of the naysayers would say that this is a low number, it's not mentioning the amount of federal dollars that we've, uh, gotten as a city, uh, thanks to this administration to continue to get rid of these blighted abandoned, uh, factories in the remediation of these brownfields. So we've had a proven track record since 2011, uh, of cleaning up the city. Uh, we still have a lot to do. I think we're moving in the right direction and I think that we should continue, uh, with this bond authorization to continue moving forward, to continue cleaning, uh, the areas of the city and, you know, and not to mention, we're not focused on one particular area. This administration is focused strategically, uh, with these bond authorizations to go to the most serious at the time and make it fair to everybody on each side of town. So I would ask that you pass this. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I might also like to comment on the first public hearing on the bond authorization for demolition of abandoned properties to address blight. Um, you know, I'm a big advocate for this because in Waterville, I don't know if you guys been over there by Church Street, we have an old factory, I know Mike is aware of this. It's, uh, they, people, uh, go inside this factory, it was over June's. And believe it or not, when I lived in Waterville, I worked there when I was a kid before we all went into service, but that was a long time ago. But nevertheless, uh, this building's gotta be knocked down. I know people been going in there, people been lighting fires in there, and it's right where the Waterville Firehouse is, uh, right across the street, down that road. It's the old Verjunes factory. And I was hoping and praying that someday, I know I mentioned this to Paul a while back and, uh, some other, other members of the Board of Aldermen, if you will, that this should be, uh, fixed up, cleared up, and rectified. I mean, we're gonna be spending the money and why not look at something in Waterville? Because don't forget, I think that the mayor's doing a good job as far as Waterville goes and all the parts of the city, because we have King Industry coming in and we have many other industries in, in Waterville, if you will. And, uh, you know, Waterville's looking up. And being the president of the Waterville Community Club, I'm very happy and elated that things are finally getting done. And I'm not, uh, putting a negative spin on this. I know things cost money. We all know that. And we all wish we can get a lot of things done in Waterbury. But the fact of the matter is that this building has been abandoned for a very long time. And, you know, there's something I think that members, entire members of the Board of Aldermen, both Republican and Democrat, should look at this. And if you guys would like, you know, we're not meeting until March 11th, the Waterville Community Club. We're off for a couple of months. But just give me a call at home and I'll show you the building and I'll show you how much it's been in deplorable sad shape and it's gotta be fixed up or cleaned up or do something. But obviously, they're not gonna renovate it. You know, I mean, I don't know how many, what kind of oils are in, inside embedded in the ground, but I know it was an old island machine factory. So it's probably something that maybe it's gotta be cleaned up by the federal government. But nevertheless, we're, we're looking, uh, to get something done. And, uh, if you guys could meet me sometime in the near future, I sure would appreciate it. And, uh, thank you for your time and I do appreciate, uh, this public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. Um, with that, we'll close that public hearing and then open the public hearing with respect to a $3 million bond authorization for replacement of elevators in the city-owned buildings. Again, please sign up with the city sheriff to speak on this issue. Uh, please state your name and address for the record. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. There's a five-minute limit, Mr. Sheriff.
First speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would ask that you pass this bond authorization for replacement of elevators for city-owned buildings. Uh, we have some very ancient, uh, elevators in our city-owned buildings that need replacement. I would hope that, uh, through this bond authorization, we could replace them. Some of them need to be upgraded. This has been long overdue. Um, if you take a look at the elevators that are in progress right now in the schools, they are on time, they are working out well. And I think in the next few years, you're gonna see the cost savings of not having to tr- uh, transport our, uh, handicapped children from one side of town to the other to go to a school that's handicap accessible. So I think that we should be, uh, upgrading our elevators in all of our city buildings because, you know, we have a lot of elderly and handicapped people that need access to, uh, our buildings. I, I know that, uh, $3 million sounds a lot, but to the people that need to get to these, uh, agencies to get what they need, uh, it means a lot. So I would ask that you pass this. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. Also, I do support this $3 million bond authorization for replacement elevators in city-owned buildings. And I believe Sprague School is gonna be getting that too. Because I know some friends of mine who are veterans and been over there and they said that there's not enough stuff over there for handicapped accessibility, if you will. And, uh, they would be looking forward to going there because they have to go visit their kids or the grandkids or whatever. And they just think it would be a good idea to have an elevator put in there. And not only that, I agree, Mr. Pelletier, there's a lot of handicapped people to come and, and visit the various schools. Not many, but enough to, to, you have to, you have to do something, which would be, in my opinion, appropriate to do this. But I, again, I am not in favor of the $3 million bond. I'm, I just, you know, not to contradict myself. I just think that we should look to see what we could do to get, uh, this priced down a little bit lower if we can, if it's possible. I sure would appreciate it because, you know, the way I look at it, the federal government is in deficit, the state's in a deficit. And just because they're waving a golden carrot in your faces, with all due respect to members of the Board of Aldermen, I think you should look at that and really scrutinize this. And, and each bond is coming out here because these mu- I, I, I'm just talking to somebody in church the other day and, and I feel strong in my heart, and I'm speaking from the heart now, that I think that what we're doing over here is we're just, you know, kicking the can down the road with all these bonds and we're just putting our, our kids' future in jeopardy, if you will, to pay back all these bonds. Because all we're doing is putting a deficit on the back of the kids' regeneration just to come in the city of Waterbury. So I would really think the members of the Board of Aldermen, all of you, both Republican and Democrat, should listen to what I'm saying and, you know, I, I think you guys have a lot of goodness in your hearts and you really care about the ones that needs a bad average working person. But we should think about the taxpayers too and see if we could save a little bit of money over here before you move forward with any of these proposals. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to the, uh, close that public hearing, go to the public hearing for the $2 million bond authorization for the Prospect Street surface parking lot. Again, it's the same instructions I gave before, Mr. Sheriff, if you'd call the first speaker when you get a chance.
First speaker tonight from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would ask that you pass this bond authorization for the Prospect Street service, uh, surface parking lot. I know that many of our business leaders, uh, in downtown for years have been asking for parking, uh, for their many businesses. I think that this is one step in this direction to help our businesses not only draw more businesses into downtown, but, uh, help, uh, more people come to downtown and, uh, come to our many great establishments downtown. And, uh, you know, it would help with parking too with the Immaculate Conception and many other, uh, places, uh, in downtown. So I would just ask that you pass this, uh, and let's, let's continue to, uh, um, make downtown, uh, the, the great place that it has been becoming since 2011 and will continue under this administration. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Stubeen Street, Lawrence V. DePello.
Lawrence DePello, 11 Stubeen Street. First, um, I'd like to, I, I wish to extend to the mayor, his family, and especially his, uh, daughter, my sincere hope that, uh, she has a rapid and full recovery after the horrendous auto accident in Florida last week. And, uh, my prior, my prayers go out to her and to all of those who were injured in that terrible accident. As far as the, uh, $2 million, uh, last time I was here, I brought up the fact that, um, we were supposed to have a bus terminal downtown when it was spoken about taking the buses off to Green. Uh, the spot that made the most sense was to demolish the parking garage on Prospect Street, to take the seen-as-bowling alley property and to provide an entranceway on North Main Street, uh, through what would be a area where people could, uh, have transfers to the buses, uh, use, uh, bath, bathroom facilities, and then extend out on the Prospect Street side. There were two groundbreaking ceremonies, uh, for that proposal and then that was the last anyone heard of it. I believe that was in 2015. Now, the question I'm hoping that you're going to ask of either the finance director or whoever is responsible for the downtown is, uh, what happened to that proposal? It was written up in the newspaper, there was money spent, and, uh, it just seems to have fallen off the radar. The other issue is we're spending now, uh, a fair amount of money downtown. We've done the green, we're redoing Library Park, and we're redoing all of, uh, East Main Street, where we had the, uh, Brick Road. So what is the proposal downtown for the buses? Are we gonna now leave them in front of the Palace Theater after we redo all of East Main Street? Or is they gonna go back onto Green? Or is the proposal to build a facility, which was originally proposed, for our downtown buses? Or are we simply gonna spend $2 million for a parking lot and then decide, uh, three or four years from now that we need a facility and let's just dig up everything that, uh, we put down there and waste $2 million of the taxpayers' money? So, uh, I, I believe that as taxpayers and as Aldermen, you do answers regarding this, uh, the whole concept for the downtown with the buses and, uh, especially where this, uh, bus terminal is gonna be. Or is it simply gonna be, let's redo East Main Street, put them in front of Palace Theater, and that's the end of it? And if that's the end of it, then we should all know that. So hopefully, uh, you'll ask the questions and hopefully you'll get the answers to those questions. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
It's a good thing we don't have too many public hearings to be up here all night. Anyways, um, I also like to voice my opinion, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road.
I know we all know it, Marty, but would you just state your name and address for the record so it'll be in the chamber?
Okay, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. Okay, um, I'd like to also make a comment on this $2 million bond authorization for Prospect Street surface parking lot. Um, to me, it seems a little bit pricey. Um, I haven't been up there in a while, but, um, I don't know how big the parking lot is, but I don't know if it's a real big parking lot or a small one. But $2 million is an awful lot of money, if you will, for, uh, to pay for parking lot. And, uh, you know, I, I just was wondering if, you know, you guys can see and find it in your hearts to maybe talk to who's ever gonna be doing this and see if they can lower the price to reasonable level rather than spend $2 million of the taxpayers' money. Because, um, again, I have been up there to look at it and I think maybe, uh, in the future, uh, you know, when you guys come out with all this stuff about bonds and everything, maybe you should contact the various community club leaders within the city of Waterbury and the citizens and have them take a tour, if you will, to look around to see what we could spend and what we can't spend, what we can afford, what we can't afford. But again, if you guys could turn around, I'm not saying I'm not against this or I'm not for it. I'm just saying I think that $2 million is pretty pricey and maybe if you could turn around and, again, do something to lower the price, that would be appropriate. And I don't wanna take up a lot of time here and go over five minutes, but I just want to say that I'm happy that you people are having this public hearing and I'm glad and elated, but again, that I, if we could turn around to maybe lower the price a little bit to save the taxpayers, city of Waterbury, some money, that would be a good thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. Then we'll close that public hearing and call the public hearing for the $1.2 million bond authorization for roof replacement at Generali Elementary School. Anyone who wishes to address the board on that bond issue, please sign up with the sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker for 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. Again, uh, thank you for this public hearing. I do appreciate it. Uh, bond authorization for $1,200,000 bond authorization for roof replacement at Generali's School. And, uh, you know, this is something that I, I know that, uh, people aren't gonna be too happy with this, but I just think that, again, the, the price is pretty pricey and I don't know why the prices seem to rise every year or every two years. Maybe because it, you know, we're getting the bond authorization and, like I said, maybe they're waving a golden carrot in our face and saying, "Hey, you might as well take the money while you can get it." And, uh, you know, it's just something that I think that we should look at to see, uh, again, if we could find, uh, a, a better price, if you will, for this. Because, uh, you know, I mean, I'm not a contractor, but when I see this as a Waterbury taxpayer and I see $1,200,000, there's a lot of money being spent on education all over the city of Waterbury. And I'm not against it, believe me. Just like I'm, I'm happy and elated you guys are gonna be doing the elevators in Sprague School. But again, as a Waterbury taxpayer, I would really like to see, maybe if we could try to save a little bit of money, even a couple hundred thousand dollars would be nice. And so if you guys can, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Aldermen could look into this and scrutinize this a little bit, if you can, and say, "Hey, maybe Mr. Spring is right. Maybe we could try to save some money over here for the Waterbury taxpayers." Again, there's a lot of things that gotta be done in Waterbury. So hopefully, uh, you could listen to what I'm saying and, uh, hopefully, uh, I'm not saying, you know, not pay attention. You guys do obviously pay attention because that's just the way things are at the Board of Aldermen. You, you have something, you talk about, you don't get a response sometimes. But I have to thank each and every one of you because you do respond to me later after the meeting and I do appreciate it. So again, if we could turn around and try to save some money for the taxpayers, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would ask that you approve this bond authorization for Generali. As an employee for the education system, I think that Generali has waited, uh, long enough to get a new roof. Um, obviously, for us to be bonding this, it's in, uh, a good amount of need to get a replacement. I will say our school inspector, who, uh, has done one heck of a job since he's taken over, uh, is on, uh, the job with many of these contractors every single day. There's no flim-flam with this guy. This guy happens to live in the city of Waterbury. Knows what it means to be a taxpayer of the city of Waterbury. If he sees any flim-flam, he's not afraid to call it out. So I think, uh, you know, uh, this is the best that they could come up with, um, you know, and, uh, we need to get it done. The safety of our students, the, the, uh, quality of education of our students is, should be and always will be, uh, the utmost importance to not only the people that are on this board serving us, but the people that, uh, elected you to do the job. So I would ask that you pass this and, uh, uh, let's, uh, let's keep making our schools great. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. We'll close, excuse me, close that public hearing and call the public hearing for the $3 million bond authorization for road improvements, milling and repaving of streets. Again, anyone who wishes to speak to this bond issue, sign up with the city sheriff, state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, call the first speaker, please.
Yeah, first speaker tonight is from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. Um, $3 million bond authorization for road improvements, milling and repaving the streets. You know, we all know that, um, the streets gotta be fixed up in the city of Waterbury along with the sidewalks, just about, uh, almost every street, I think. Because I've seen a lot of people complain about potholes. So I mean, how could anybody be opposed to this? It's just that, I just don't understand it. It's when they start paving the roads, they should pave them in, in a place, in a time, if you will, like in this, maybe in the spring or the summer, or maybe, uh, be in the fall or something. Because, you know, I always see later on that the roads start falling apart and deteriorating. You know, a while ago, I came back and told you there was some new technology out there where they could turn around and, and melt the old, uh, junk tires, if you will, melt them down and use that for paving. And that would be good quality stuff because I don't know if the, what type of, uh, stuff to use it for the asphalt plants, I don't know if it's good or secondary or whatever. But the bottom line is, I think that we should look into that. There's a lot of new technology out there for the year 2020. I brought this up before the Board of Aldermen, many times before in the past, probably almost three years now in a row. So I think you should look at that new technology that's out there because I know in Europe, they're using it, they're melting the tires down, they're using that to pave roads. And it's a, a good cost factor. Saves an awful lot of money for people and folks. So again, it's something, I know that we gotta pave the roads. Everybody here would agree with that. They gotta be done, they gotta be fixed. Because I know we have Ann Sweeney in the house and over here, and where she lives on her street, that's gotta be paved too, right, Ann? We looked at your, your road out there too, and that's gotta be paved really bad. And it's for her ladies on the Board of Education. She's been there for a long time and she's doing a fine, fantastic job. So that's gotta be paved down the street that she lives on. So if we could, you know, turn around and, and, and look at the various roads that really, really been neglected for a long time and really truly need to be paved. Because I know all up around that area, even on Sheffield Street, Sheffield Terrace, and around there, they, they do gotta be paved, them roads. So if we can do that, that would be fine. And so I just think that before you guys go out there, and I don't know who makes the list or who's gonna be paved, the roads paved and roads that are gonna be paved, but let's just all work together for the betterment of the citizens of Waterbury and to get our roads paved and fixed. Because again, there's people driving all over the place and there's potholes all over the place. And, you know, and not everywhere, but enough places that, you know, be recognized and noticed. So if we could turn it around and get this all fixed up and help the taxpayers out and the citizens of Waterbury, and also, you know, when we have people coming in Waterbury to visit, that's also a good thing when you see the roads paved and things are being fixed up. And I'm, you know, it's just something that's gotta be done. I mean, who would be opposed to this? I'm not. I'm just saying, let's just spread the money and spread the love a little bit to help people out throughout the whole city of Waterbury. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would ask that you pass this bond authorization for the road improvements. Uh, I will say that the road improvements here are scheduled to be done in the spring, contrary to what we've done in the past. Um, as I recall, uh, this administration asked our Public Works Director and, uh, it threw him, they have for the past couple of years instituted the website and a, uh, phone number for residents to call, uh, if they had any complaints with their streets, they could call or email and the Public Works Director would come out with his team. And if he had to meet with the residents to hear their concerns, um, you know, that's transparency. Um, you know, obviously, we try to, in the city of Waterbury, do the best we can to get everything done. Um, if we were to be able to pave every street, I think that this bond authorization would be much more than it is. But we do it the best we can fiscally, responsibly, and, uh, we go to the streets that need it the most. I have to say that our, uh, Public Works Director, uh, Mr. Simpson, has had a proven track record for the many years he's served. I, I don't know, I, I think it's over 20 years, Mr. Simpson. But, um, you know, we are very lucky to have the Public Works team that we have and they are very, uh, quick to answer the public's calls when it comes to potholes and many other issues with our roads. Um, and, you know, not only with this bond authorization, but I will give the mayor credit. Uh, two of his biggest critics that happen to be running against him, this was a main issue with them, and they said, "Why aren't we paving in the spring?" And through the mayor, he said, "Well, you know what? Why don't we try it in the spring and see what happens?" I think that this bond authorization could have been a little cheaper if we had done it like we have in the past. But, you know, the mayor is a very open-minded person. Sometimes he doesn't like the naysayers and what they say, but he's open to criticism. I don't know if I could be as brave as he is with the criticism he gets sometimes, but I would ask that you pass this. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. Excuse me. We'll close that public hearing and call to order the public hearing regarding a $625,000 bond authorization for fire engine vehicle replacement for fire engine number seven. Again, if you wish to address the board on this issue, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
I'm glad this is the last one.
As glad as I am.
Bond authorization for fire engine vehicle replacement. Right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I remember that when you come to Waterville Community Club, I'll have a cup of coffee waiting for you. Uh, $625,000 bond authorization for fire vehicle replacement?
Marty, you gotta do your name and address. I know it's silly, but it's for the record.
Okay, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. I'll restart your timer.
All right. $625,000 for fire v, uh, engine vehicle replacement, uh, for engine number seven, I guess. And, uh, I don't know how many fire engines or trucks that we have in the city of Waterbury. I never looked into it, or fire stations. But I was think, I was thinking about this on the way in. That why can't we, instead of spending this kind of money for one fire truck? You know, the fire trucks go out, we know they do a good job for emergencies and everything else, okay? But they're big, they're clumsy, and they gotta go up in a lot of different areas in the city of Waterbury. And, you know, Waterville roads are tight sometimes with people parking, especially in the winter. So I was thinking, maybe if we could turn around and you guys could find it, again, in your, in your hearts and open up your minds, if you will, and see if we could turn around and buy some SUVs for the city of Waterbury, all-wheel drives, and equip them for the fire apparatuses, if you will, and put what you gotta put in there for emergency vehicles and have a four-wheel drive. Because, you know, four-wheel drives, I have one, a lot of you people probably have. I know a lot of you- of you people probably have, I know a lot of you members of the Board of Aldermen have them, you could go anywhere with them. And I just think it's something that we should look at. I don't know how the fire union would feel about that, but I just think it's something that's positive for the city of Waterbury, because I know a lot of places, municipalities, not just in the state of Connecticut, but around the country, if you will, a lot of them have SUVs. And I think they probably start at 25, 30,000. So, I mean, like I said, I don't know how many firehouses there are, I don't know if there's seven or eight, but if you could probably equip every firehouse with one SUV, brand-new, I don't care whether it be Ford, Chevy, Dodges, whatever, it doesn't matter, and long as they're American-made, that'd be fine, that's excellent, it should be that way, by America, but American, if you will, I'm sorry, please. Anyways, it's something that you should, you guys should look at. I don't know if this is a done deal, but I'm not on the Board of Aldermen. Again, if I was, I'd bring it up to the fire chief, and I would ask him if you could find it in your heart to have SUV, and maybe that would be something more better for the firemen to utilize to go around for the emergencies. And I don't know if they could redo this fire truck or not, I believe Mr. Sherman brought this up last time at the meeting, if they could turn it around and redo this fire truck, fix it up, if you will, renovate it or to do what you have to do, or get some old parts and transfer them into the new fire truck, or do what you got to do and fix it up to try to save the taxpayers money. Again, I think it's a good thing that we're spending the money, but again, as I said before, I don't want to see us bonding everything in sight. We're going to be putting the backs on the generations yet to come in the city of Waterbury, because we do have a lot of people living in Waterbury, you have people that are going to be moving in here in Waterbury, and, you know, they have to make sure that we got to spend money as well as we need it. Yes, we do have to spend it, but you have to watch where you're spending every penny for the taxpayers, and I hate to repeat myself, but, you know, as I said, I was talking to a friend of mine in church, he said, "Martin, we can't be doing this, you know, bonding everything in sight, because you got to look at these kids that are coming up in the school system and going to be grown up themselves here in Waterbury, hopefully want to stay in Waterbury, and they're probably not going to want to be here if they see, you know, the taxes are going to be so high," said the second highest miller rate in the state of Connecticut, "if we can get that lower, that would be fine." But everything is connected here, and I just think it's something that we should look at and scrutinize, and maybe take that in consideration to have, buy some SUVs and talk to the people in the fire department and say, "Hey, you know what, Martin came up with a really good idea. This is something that maybe we should look at, and we could have in the city of Waterbury," because I just think a lot of people would think that would be a great thing, especially going up and down the hills.
One minute.
I can't believe it, I'm almost there. Going up and down the hills in the city of Waterbury, and, you know, with SUV, because, you know, I have friends of mine that have SUVs, and I have friends of mine that have Jeeps, and there's a lot of things you could do with them, maneuver, if you will, all around in various areas in the city of Waterbury, and get there a lot quicker, because, you know, even the firemen told me themselves, "Martin, sometimes these fire trucks are great, but it's like driving a tractor-trailer on a busy street, and you can't get anywhere, because people don't let you get by, even though they got the emergency flashes on and sirens and what have you." But I think this is something you guys should look at, and thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would ask that you pass this bond authorization for the new fire truck. I have to commend Chief Blue, he answered many questions the last meeting on what the procedures are when we get rid of a fire truck, what we salvage, what goes into thinking, what we need a new fire truck. I would have to say, this is a man who not only was a fire marshal, you know, he's a great department head, he knows the kind of money that we're spending here on this. These are things that our department heads look at, and they understand the costs, and they understand what the citizens of the city, you know, go through to pay these things. But when this man, who happens to know fire, happens to know what it feels like, tastes like, what, you know, what his department goes through in fighting fires and saving people's lives, when he says that we need a new fire truck here, I would have to take him at his word. This, there is no second chances here. We can't, we can't afford to cost firemen's lives here by saying, "Let's give it another year with this engine." And I understand there have been people in the past that have said, "Well, let's get SUVs." On any given night in a firehouse, as I recall, there is at least six to seven people stationed at the firehouse per shift. To take two people and put them in an SUV, you are leaving, I would say, three to four people left in the firehouse that would have to leave the firehouse if there was a fire call, which would probably put them in jeopardy, because it wouldn't be a full company altogether if they were answering a medical call. I believe that this is why we've been doing this with the fire trucks, and we're not the only city that does this with fire trucks. And at the last meeting, there was discussion, "Well, why can't we get the Greenwich Firetruck" that was discussed? You have to take into consideration, when these fire trucks that people are looking to sell are not configured in some respects to our many firehouses' buildings, you know, we have to configure these fire trucks to be able to fit in some of our firehouses. If we don't, and we just buy the fire truck, then we're going to be coming back here asking the bond and extend our firehouses, or potentially move our firefighters to the new firehouses. So, I think this is the best option, and as a brand-new chief, a chief who has been here for a very long time, who knows what he's doing, let's give him the benefit of the doubt, and let's give him a chance, and I know he's going to do everything in his power to save the citizens of Waterbury money, but this is just something that we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, we'll close that public hearing and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, and I would ask, in our prayers this evening, that we keep, I'm happy to report that Maggie is back in Waterbury this evening with her family, her prognosis is good, but she's got a long road to recovery, as do most of her teammates, so I'd ask that you keep Maggie and her classmates, or her teammates and their families in your prayers, and particularly Grace Rett, who was the young woman who was on the trip, who was killed in the crash. Her and her family are going to have a very difficult time. Thank you.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman Cato. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Here.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Excuse me, we have a quorum. With that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up again with the city sheriff, please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit, I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Can I guess?
First, yeah, first speaker tonight from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
What a surprise. Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I would also like to extend my best wishes to Maggie O'Leary, the entire O'Leary family, and the many other families that were involved in that horrific accident. But I got to tell you, as a Waterbury citizen for almost 34 years, I have never been more prouder than I was to have been in this city last week. Every single time there's a tragic event, or something happens to somebody in this city, no matter what comes out in the news, you know, sometimes, we always see what bad happens, either in the city or the state of Connecticut. But after what happened last week, and, you know, I'm a man of faith and I believe in prayer, I am just overwhelmed and thankful that we live in a city that we could disagree on many things, but when something happens to one of us, we all come together, and, you know, seeing what occurred in that church last week, and the many prayers, and, you know, I texted the mayor, sent him my best wishes, and I know it means a lot to them. And I can only say, not only as for myself, but speaking for everybody here and everybody in the city, if there's ever anything the O'Leary family needs, I know we are all with them, because no matter what has happened to each one of us in the city of Waterbury, they have always been there for us. And I would also like to thank Mac the Mac for not only handling the city the last few days, relieving the mayor, you know, obviously, you know, when it comes to your children, you have to do what's right, but handling the city and handling that mass service, I thought that you've had a lot of many finest moments since you've been here, and I want to give you kudos for that. I know we've had a lot on the agenda tonight, and these are tough issues here, but they have to be made. I'm sure down the line, we're going to have so many more tough issues to come before us, but we are a strong city. We will get through those tough times, just like we got through the tough times last week, and I hope that we could continue to work together on these many issues. And lastly, for those that might not have anything to do these next few weekends, I will be making an announcement within the next 24 hours, the locations that I will be at, but I am starting a pro toll movement, hoping that we could get these tolls passed. It's crucial for our transportation and the many other projects, not only in transportation in the city of Waterbury and the Noch Duck Valley, but we need to get this going, and we need to finally get our transportation in the right direction. So, I would ask anybody that could help me out, I would be more than grateful. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Stuben Street, Lawrence DePillo.
Thank you, Lawrence DePillo, 11 Stuben Street. I bring to your attention item number three, requesting support for credit allowances for entry-level positions. At present, city ordinance add 10 points to the scores of city residents after they pass the civil service exams for the jobs of custodian or firefighter. It puts them at a higher, a little higher up on the hiring list, making it more likely they'll get the job. The City Civil Service Commission has asked you Aldermen tonight to consider a change for the ordinance that will grant city residents an extra 10 points for all entry-level jobs. The entry-level jobs would be determined first through the Human Services Director, Scott Morgan, and then it would be voted upon by the Civil Service Commission as to whether or not an entry-level job deserved the 10 points. By having the Civil Service Commission make the determination, you're putting it in the hands of the board members who are residents of the city of Waterbury, and I believe there's Alderman representation there as well. So, I could think of no better way to determine whether or not an entry-level position would apply. People in Waterbury feel much better when the people who are working for the, for the city are Waterbury residents. You want someone working in the parks who potentially is going to use the parks. The benefit to hiring a city resident, because they have a vested interest in making sure the job is done right. Now, what's being proposed is city residents, the minimum credit allowance is set forth in the charter for the city, residents shall receive 10 points credit allowance on civil service exams for entry-level positions, which shall include entry-level firefighter and maintainer one. Currently, it only applies to entry-level firefighters and maintainer ones. This would open it up to all entry-level positions. Now, there was some question as to how the Civil Service Commission would determine it, and again, it's through a recommendation from the Human Services Director. Initially, when this was discussed, it was that if the Civil Service felt later on that an entry-level position was, let's say, not in the best interest to give points, that they would be able to rescind that. My understanding is Corporation Counsel has made the determination that that's not, you want to call, legal. They said, once a determination is made by the board, that an entry-level position would have the 10 points, then it could not be rescinded by the Civil Service Commission. So, once it's given, it can't be taken away. For those of you who were curious about that, I would ask that you query Corporation Counsel as to why that determination was made. There may be, and again, I don't know the legalities of it, maybe what needs to happen is if the Civil Service Commission determines that an entry-level position should have the 10 points, and then it's determined that that was not the proper decision, then maybe a three-fifths vote by the board to rescind might be in order. I know there's going to be a public hearing on this, there'll be discussions at that time, and then it will go over to Corporation Counsel, I guess, for the final writing of the change in the ordinance.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you. But certainly, it's beneficial to have Waterbury residents fill Waterbury jobs, and if you have any questions, I would defer you to the minutes of the Civil Service Commission as to all the discussions regarding why it was determined to be so beneficial to the city residents. The only other issue on the agenda is your item number four, and I question the food services, the $1,008,000. The question is, where is the commissary now, and how is the city servicing the schools? And I didn't see anything in there that really said what the dire need was to spend $1.8 million. And maybe someone can answer, where do we, where's the commissary now, and why is another $1.8 million required for the Department of Education? Thank you so very much.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. I'd just like to relay the sentiments with everyone, that I'm glad that the mayor's daughter, Maggie, is doing well, and I want to thank Mac for doing a great job when the mayor was out of town down in Florida, taking care of the family. I met Maggie a couple of times, I met her at the mayor's inauguration, and I met her a few other times, some of the things that we had, various activities in the city of Waterbury, and I have to tell you what a fine, fine person she is, 18-years-old, she's a nice girl, and she reminds me of my daughter so much, Melissa, who lives in Georgia now, because Melissa was always outgoing and friendly and happy and everything else, and I'm just happy and elated that she's doing good, because, you know, a lot of us been out there to say prayers for her, I know our family did, I know in church we did, and even though I belong to United Methodist Church, which is Protestant church, it doesn't matter Protestant, Catholic, doesn't matter, you know, the bottom line is, you're out there to do something nice to somebody, and that's something that's very important that we should all, you know, look at, because, you know, a lot of people do come to Waterbury. look at, because, you know, a lot of people do come to Waterbury and together, if you will, we all come for the betterment of each and every one of us, especially when there's some type of tragedy, and I'm so sorry for that young lady lost her life at 20 years old, it's a horrible tragedy. So, again, and I'm just, I'm just grateful that Maggie's doing good, and we're looking forward to seeing her when she comes back home, and I believe they're on their way home now. But I did want to say that in Waterville, that we have an issue over there, and I brought this up before, we have an old Christmas tree, if you will, it's an old pine tree, right across the street from the old Waterville Firehouse. That needs to be knocked on and replaced. We're seeing that we could turn around and maybe talk to the people who were in the Park Department, I know Mark Lombardo's not here tonight, but if we can get that cut down and get somebody with a bat to offer the city of Waterbury and get that out there, and, you know, because we do want to plant a brand-new tree in Waterville and right across the street from the firehouse, because that's something that we've been waiting for, for a very long time, because I know there are some things out there that we can do, and we do have the money, if you will. I know we spoke about this at the Waterville Community Club more than once, because we do have things that, I know that they say that they can't provide any lighting to the tree, I understand that, but we, we looked up and we did some research, if you will, and we saw that they do have some solar lights that we could put up. So we're looking at doing this and paying for it ourselves, and we did have some money saved up for this, and it would be budgeted, but if the city can help us out, and I did speak to Mr. LeBlanc about this on the way in tonight, so if we could do something like that, that would be great. Also, we just had a storm recently, and I'm glad the Public Works Director is here, he's a good friend of mine, and I like him very much, he comes to Waterville Community Club, he supports us a lot, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but when I was praying Karen to work the other day, when the snowstorm, going down the street, down where I live, down toward Merritt Road and Frost Road and out toward where she works, I don't want to say where she works, but I seen a lot of plow trucks out, City Waterbury contract trucks, but I'd see for some reason, nobody was putting any sand down. And now, when I lived on Downstream Fort Hill, it did the same thing, almost seemed like, I don't know if they didn't want to spare the sand, or they have, you know, issues about that, or the city can't afford to put sand down, but I think on the hilly areas, you know, you should put sand downs because you're jeopardizing people's lives, because it's a good thing I got all-wheel drive, but I've seen some cars that couldn't make it up Merritt Road because there was no sand down. Again, I know Mr. Simpson does a fine, fantastic job, and I'm not saying this to be disrespectful, he knows that, I think very highly of him, he's a gentleman and a scholar, I know he's always there, whenever I call, he's always answers, he always answers the phone, so I'm just letting you guys know that this is stuff that's got to be done, and we should look at that in the future. And I don't know if the contractors got any word that they can't go out there and put any sand down, because I know they got the spreading machines, but I didn't see any. And maybe I'm wrong for saying that, but I spoke to some friends of mine, and they didn't see any sand being put down. But again, in Waterville, so if you guys can turn around, because I am going to go before the various boards and commission, especially the Board of Public Works, I know some people here tonight are on that board, and I'm going to go and see if we can get this tree cut down, because the tree is dying, and it's been there a long time, and we want to turn around and we want to put a plaque up to, you know, recognize the people in Waterville who did so much. Thank you.
Next speaker from 26 Woodstock Street, Orin Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. Not that elegant of a speaker as everyone before me, so.
You need to just state your name and address.
My name is Orin Stevens, 26 Woodstock Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
Again, I'm not an elegant speaker, so I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible, but I'm actually questioning item number six, the lot 787 North Main Street and the, that whole area there. I'm of the understanding that it's about to be sold to a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit organization, which would cause, as a taxpayer of the city, me knowing that there are other businesses in the area that are tax-paying businesses that are also willing to buy that property, why the city would actually give up that tax opportunity to gain tax dollars and allow that to happen? So I was just curious about why that would be, and if you guys could bring it to your board to, to allow, at least give us a better understanding of why that would be, that we're allowing tax, tax dollars to go out the window. Okay? All right, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next order of business would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, January 6, 2020. Alderman Brunelli.
Mr. President, motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, January 6, 2020. So moved.
Second. Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Before we recess into committees, we have the old business items number two through seven, which are the bonding authorizations that were the subject of all the public hearings this evening, and just because they are of wide interest, I would suggest that we refer those to the Committee of the Whole and take them up as the Committee of the Whole at the beginning of the meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to refer items, old business, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, to the Committee of the Whole. Alderman Brunelli.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The items are referred to the Committee of the Whole, and with that, I would entertain a motion to resolve ourselves into the Committee of the Whole to take up old business items number two through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are now a Committee of the Whole. With that, we'll take up old business items number two through seven, and if we need to split it out for the vote, we can do that, but for now, for discussion purposes, let's take them all up together rather than taking them through one at a time. So we'll, let me start with this, is there a motion with respect to old business items number two through seven?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Mike, thanks for coming. Just one or two quick questions, and then we'll open it up. The, the numbers that we have for the bond authorizations this evening, those are the estimated numbers to get the bonds sold so that we can then go out to bid and go out to contract. Those are not the final project numbers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, once this is all done, once we approve the money and the funding is in place, then you can go out, we can do the bidding process, contractors will come in, and then we'll enter into a contract for whatever those numbers turn out to be, and obviously, if they're higher, you'll have to come back, if they're lower, we can go forward with it?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And just with respect, there was a question tonight about the streets, and I know we talked about this last meeting when, when this came up, but, and I don't know if you would know off the top of your head, but we're not doing the paving right now, this is paving that's now going to be done in the spring. Am I right about that? The roadwork?
Well, there is roadwork that's scheduled for the spring.
Okay.
But this is, is not, this authorization is not specific for the work that's getting done in the spring.
Okay. So what's, what's going to be done with this roadwork?
It'll be for the next paving cycle.
For the next cycle? Okay, it's coming up after, but it's not, it's not going to be done in the, in the winter, is what I guess I'm asking?
No.
No? Okay, all right. I think there was just some concern tonight, one of the speakers, that it was like, we're bonding now, so we're going to do the paving now, which is, would be a problem.
No, this is just the, the procedural process. This authorization was approved in the capital budget for this year. The second step in that procedural process is to approve the bond authorization, and then that would allow this work to go out to bid at the appropriate time, following the cycle that's in place annually for road milling and repaving.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Mike, I had two. Thanks for coming, but President Brunelli just asked that one, so the 10, $10,825,000 is just a bond authorization, obviously, we may not spend near that amount of money, correct, obviously? You just answered it?
That is correct.
Okay.
And also, the, the ultimate net bonding will be impacted by any grants that were, are accrued to these projects. The one where there's definitely grant assistance that'll be part of the project is for the Generality roof replacement, although the bond authorization is for the 1.2 million. Approximately 78% to 80% of that project will be financed through a grant from the state of Connecticut, and our net bonding will be in that 20% to 22% range, which I believe in that transmittal is, is estimated at about 240,000.
Okay, so we're bonding for the 1.2, even though we hopefully will only spend about 300,000, 400,000, hopefully?
That's correct.
Okay. And our debt service budget, is debt falling off as we're adding debt? Are we going to stay around the same number? We're not going to go above it? That's my main concern, is down the road, are we, are we raising our debt down the road? Are we staying at that same number and/or lower?
Yes, so we'll be staying at that number or lower. We do have in the years, in the short-term years ahead, debt coming off the books, and currently, our, our level contribution each year that's built into the general fund budget for debt service is at $22 million. And that number in the management plan, essentially, that we've been working with for several years now, is intended to be levelized right around that number of 22 million. That represents approximately 5% of the operating budget, and is something that our, actually our debt policy speaks to, is looking to maintain our levelized debt service at 5% to 6% of our operating budget. In particular, in 2022, there's a substantial bond that'll be maturing, and it's got a, a long history tied to it. It was in 2002 that the deficit financing bonds were issued at that time, and they were 20-year bonds, and they will be coming due in full maturity in 2022. So that's part of being able to maintain the levelized debt service. You know, there's debt service that will continually be coming off the books. That transition year, '22 to '23, has a good amount coming off the books that will be replenished by the new debt that we're issuing. And I think, you know, speaking to the, the really good story for the city of Waterbury is, the debt that we're putting on the books are for capital investments into the city. It's not finance a deficit, or, you know, what I would categorize, if you will, bad debt. This is the, the really good type of debt. If you're going to issue debt, you want to issue it for capital investment purposes. That will help the city in its, its continual renewal and serving, you know, the various purposes or needs that have been identified for the authorization that's before you.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Further questions? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mike. I'll start off with the demolition of abandoned properties that bond at 1 million. I spoke briefly earlier this evening with Dan Pesci and Mac the Mac, and they helped shed, shine some light on it for me, and I was hoping maybe you or Dan may be able to do that as well. When, when we're referring to a blighted property, I think some people may confuse it with, you know, the, the property that doesn't get taken care of by, with their lawn, what have you, or, or junk in the yard, and is that, that's not the case from what I understand?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we happen to know how many properties that we have that are referenced for this type of bond? Does the city hold right now? Do we know how many pieces of property?
That the city holds?
Yes.
Yeah, there, hopefully there aren't any.
Mike Gilmore, 99 Ridgeway Avenue, Waterbury. Holding of buildings, Roger, are the brownfields, the ones that we hold now that I would reference, and don't know if this is the target of the money or not, which would be 835 South Main, the big brownfield, and then Adamant Property, 698 South Main Street. As far as regular buildings right now, three-family houses, we don't have any in the pipeline, but we have foreclosed on blighted buildings in the past to get our hands on them and then knock them down. And to answer your first question, we do have a lively clean and lean program that we will go out, issue an order, and clean and lean your property, that comes out of the general fund, and we get checks weekly back on that, on those properties. The cut your grass isn't cheap, and we get paid all the time on those, the banks when the properties sell, and that also includes the board up, so we have an active program for that. This money would be for the safety, public safety, emergency demolition, and demolitions deemed needed by the nuisance enforcement team that meets every Tuesday morning.
Thank you, Mike. So what happens to a piece of property if the city deems that it's unsafe and needs to be demoed? Can you explain what happens?
So the nuisance enforcement team will talk about it. Mr. Grave Line, the building official, will then issue emergency demolition order, and then the property's taken down. And if the property is privately owned, all costs are leaned, and we hope to get it back at some point.
So if we, if we don't get the lien back from the property holder, and the city takes ownership of that property, what happens to that property, and what happens to the funds once the city sells that piece of property?
Mike can answer that question.
That you were, essentially, you're describing a situation where it then becomes a vacant lot that is in, owned by the city. It would be categorized in our surplus property, and it's actually a occurring, ongoing evaluation from the standpoint of how do best go about putting those parcels out for RFP purposes? It's, it's a program that's evolving and, and, you know, under consideration is, is going forward with a land, a land bank, you know, to facilitate that process, but ultimately, at the end of the day, there would come a point in time where, if it makes sense, the parcel, the vacant parcel would be put out for RFP, and the proceeds that come in from the sale, that, those proceeds go into the city's unallocated capital funds for availability of money for future appropriations.
So would it not be best spent towards this particular fund here?
What we've done, I think because of the duration of time, and there's also, be it, it may be in the, I don't think it's in the city's charter, but it's probably in an ordinance that specifically identifies that proceeds from the sale of surplus property needs to go into the city's unallocated capital funds. The money that we've brought back into this demolition fund is when we've collected on liens, and in those cases, the money does go back to the pot of money that's available for future demolitions.
Okay, okay. All right, so.
And that has happened, I, it's a, it's been very successful from the standpoint of the leaning of these properties, and at some point in time, particularly if there's insurance proceeds that are, are paid after a fire, there's a collection against the lien that comes into play.
Okay, so if the lien is paid, that money goes back into this fund. Do you know where we are with the current million dollars that was last bonded for this? Where we are, the funding level for that?
Yeah, um, don't quote me, but I, 100, there you go, I'll quote Mike Gilmore, 184,000 was the available funds. So once that money is expended, it'll be this subsequent authorization that'll allow us to continue to go forward with the program.
So is it safe to assume that we have spent $800,000 and haven't been able to recoup leaned money?
No, there's, there, we've essentially spent more through recouping back the lien, the collections on liens that have happened over the past two to three years.
Okay. All right. Thank you concerning that item. I do, concerning the, the fire engine, and I think it's a great idea that we're replacing age vehicles, it's obviously needed. My concern is, and hopefully you can explain to us, why we're looking to bond a fire truck as opposed to leasing or financing, what have you?
Generally, for large apparatus or vehicle purchases, the city's financing mechanism that it's utilized has been through bonding. With the city's bonding, our bond credit rating where it's at, with interest rates where they have been and are continuing to hold, it's, from a financing cost standpoint, the bond option has been the preferred utilized mechanism, believing that that would, in that one classification, be a lower cost than the cost of a lease purchase. Additionally, with the ability to... Additionally, with the ability to really extend the useful life of these vehicles, the one apparatus that's being replaced here is a 2002 apparatus. So nearly 18 years has been achieved from a useful life standpoint, and arguably probably another year before the new apparatus comes onboard for its replacement. So the return on investment, if you will, is pretty extensive from the fire department's ability really to extend the useful life of these vehicles and get full maximum value out of the investment that's been made. With a lease, if you went just the lease route, you would essentially be turning over the vehicle over a shorter period, you know, very short period of years. And there'd be an additional cost tied to, you know, that lease program and turning and exchanging in, if you will, a used vehicle for a new vehicle. But even if you went the lease purchase route, where at the end of the lease period, you bought out the lease, again, there's built-in costs in that type of structure that ultimately, you know, in my estimation, would be more costly than the financing through our bonding that we have available to us. And again, I think really, you know, at the end of the day, when we do also bond, you know, we go out generally 20 or 25 years. This is an example where, you know, you'd get, you know, potentially 20 years out of that as an exchange, if you will, for bonding for the period of the useful life. But the fact of the matter is, when we go out to market, we're bonding multiple projects at the same time. And although it's 20 years, if you were to break down each of the bonds or projects that are being financed, it would be the components that have the shorter useful lives that are arguably paid off first at the end of the day.
Chief Baloo, are you in agreement that we can generally get 18 to 20 years out of these?
Terry Baloo, Cavigaleen. Yes, I'm in complete agreement. I defer, obviously, the bike to the blank on the finances, but we've invested, again, as I've said, great money in the vehicle repair operation that we're running. And we have talented individuals, and I think that your best bet is to run these things out through the cycle of their life at 18 years. I know that the previous administration had explored lease options at that time. Lease to own was the only option. There was no lease to return the last time that they looked. I have not explored it, but lease to own, there's significant cost incurred in that program, and you end up paying significantly more for the apparatus than you would through bonding.
I know it's a little off-topic, but it's been brought to, I've been questioned about it numerous times concerning, like what Martin touched on earlier, putting an SUV at the fire stations. Can you explain why not that would be a good solution for the city of Waterbury?
Yeah, I don't know what firefighting model an SUV would solve. I know that SUVs are used in other areas, most notably rural areas. That's a platform for wildfires, brush application, and maybe some rescue in rough terrain. It's not the application we have in an urban setting. When we respond to any call, we need to be available from that particular call, whether it's a medical call or a lockout. At that point, we could be discharged to another call. You need to have the full complement of equipment with you, hoses, pumps, ladders. There's not an SUV out there that's going to carry anywhere near the tools we need to get our job done.
So in order to place an SUV at a fire station and have it adequately manned, because we're pulling two to three people off of a fire engine or apparatus, that would be, we'd need to increase staffing at each firehouse?
You would need to increase staffing. You're not meeting the minimum manning requirements that we currently have in place.
Understood. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mike, one more question. You made mention that it was the most viable financial reason to go with the bonding. Is it something that you've recently looked at to actually see that the lease purchase is not a more viable option now than, say, when you, we looked for the last truck that we replaced?
No, I wouldn't say it's been looked at very recently.
Okay.
It's, it just, you know, and again, it just, from an assessment standpoint, you know, with a, when you have the tying component of the lease purchase, and ultimately, if you have to go with a lease purchase, and actually, under either scenario, whether it was a lease to return or lease to purchase, you know, the financing company tied to that lease is going to be looking to make sure that, you know, there's a decent enough return on the financing that they're providing for.
And when I said last question, I meant on that particular item.
Okay.
Concerning the Prospect Street, paving to create a parking lot for the city, public parking, I assume, it's for everybody? Or is it going to be relegated to certain businesses in the area?
It'll be a municipal parking lot.
Okay. Have we entertained the option of having a business or maybe the schools purchase that lot and maintain it under the guise that it has to be used, a portion of it for municipal parking, and a portion of it for, say, Yukon or Post?
No, that hasn't been entertained at this point. You know, certainly, you know, with the recent two announcements, you know, with the future expected redevelopment of 36 North Main, as well as potentially what may come of Yukon and its growth, being the center of excellence for Allied Health with their new bachelor's degree program. You know, the tie-in of that and also other possibilities that may come as we go forward, we think, you know, at the end of the day, there's justified need, you know, for converting what was a ramp garage into, in this case, a municipal parking lot. And, you know, as far as what may come down the road from possibilities, whether certain spots are leased, that's really yet to be determined and would be down the road.
So it would typically be like what we're seeing now out in front of City Hall. We have the parking, what have you, apparatus there. Go up and use your car to put some change in, you get the slip. Same scenario at this parking lot?
Yeah, I think it's anticipated that it would be a similar type structure where it's a kiosk set up with a gate, you know, for entry in and out through that type of structure. And again, as we have done with the, with the parking garages, existing parking garages, where there's arrangements that make sense, you know, that would be evaluated, you know, in the future. And if such an agreement is contemplated, it would be probably for you for consideration.
Do we know how many spots this will provide?
I do not at this point in time, no.
So we're going to go into a design and engineering contract, and at that point, we'll determine, you know, what we can put and what we can fit in the lot. We're not yet at the design and engineering phase. Once we get to that point, we'll figure out what we can fit in there. It's similar to the parking, it'll probably be similar to the parking lot arrangement that we have across from Berus on West Main Street.
Sure.
It would probably take that model, but that's just conjecture at this point. Once we go into design and engineering into that phase, we'll know more about what the lot will look like.
Dean, will you just identify yourself?
Yep, sorry. Dan Page, Interim Director, Waterbury Development Corporation.
Thank you.
Mike, I have to touch on what was brought up earlier in public speaking concerning funding being provided for this area for a potential bus hub, what have you. Has the city actually provided funding or received funding to have this spot utilized for a specific reason and then not utilize it for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Further questions? Alderman?
Yes, Mike, on the milling and repaving. We didn't do any milling or repaving last year. So my question is, is there a list that we already have that we're going to be working off of? Or is there going to be priority stuff that needs to be done? And there's areas that I'm also concerned with, with our sidewalks as well. Will those properties be taken care of with this money?
Okay, I'll let our Director of Public Works.
Yeah, I forgot Dave was here. How you doing, Dave?
Good, thank you. David Simpson, Director of Public Works. Alderman, let me make sure I answer all of your questions.
Okay.
The first one is, is there a list?
Yes.
This board approved a $2.3 million contract with B&amp;W Paving.
Okay.
That will happen in the spring, and you were provided a list at that time. I don't have that list right in front of me.
Okay.
But if you have a specific question, feel free to give me a call. There is mechanisms, particularly as we evaluate streets in the spring, if we have to make some critical changes.
Okay. That will be all.
Anything else? Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question back on the Prospect Street lot. Do we have a projected revenue? How did we come up with the $2 million that we're approving?
It, at this point, it was an estimate, just an estimate based on the parcel size for developing a municipal parking lot, surface lot that encompasses the design and estimated cost. I think at the end of the day, we'll only really have a solid number once the design has been put together and the work itself is put out to bid. It's, you know, just a very rough estimate at this point.
And just to clarify, because I'm not too familiar with this, so a surface lot, is that including the asphalting, the landscaping, the gate, the meter? Or is that purely, when I think surface, I just think asphalt?
Yeah, we would, you know, certainly, the project itself, once it's designed, would incorporate, you know, lighting. It's definitely a pavement, a paved lot with lighting, landscaping, and the gate, et cetera. So yes. And ultimately, though, you know, those are all the components that would be incorporated in the design, and then it would be through the bid process that we'd have an indication at that point whether the estimate is close or not.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then. The motion before the board is the approval of Old Business Items Number 2 through 7. So Old Business Number 2 is the $1 million authorization for demolition of abandoned properties. Item 3 is the $3 million authorization for replacement of elevators in the city-owned buildings. Item 4 is a $2 million authorization for Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot. Item 5 is a 1.2 million bond authorization for roof replacement at Generali Elementary School. Old Business Item 6 is a $3 million bond authorization for road improvements, milling and repaving. And Old Business Item 7 is a $625,000 bond authorization for fire engine vehicle replacement, particularly Fire Engine 7. There being no further discussion, there being, the motion is to, on the floor is to approve those items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously, and the items are recommended for approval. With that, I would entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Made by Alderman Bernelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're back in the regular order of business. We'll include those items as part of the consent calendar for the final vote. And with that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with Intergovernmental and then go to Finance. Thank you.
I call your Intergovernmental Committee to order. First item on the agenda is item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a construction contract with J.A. Rosa Construction LLC in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,827,545.50 and funded by the Food Service Fund balance account for fit out of the Waterbury Public Schools Central Commissary as submitted by Kiri A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve item number four as read.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with Dude Solutions, Inc. for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $98,758.75 to provide for facility management system as submitted by Kiri A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number five as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the salary range adjustment for Director of Public Works. Current salary range, $90,000 to $110,000. Recommended new salary range, $110,000 to $140,000, as submitted by Scott P. Morgan, Director of Human Resources, Office of the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question on where the current director falls right now in this range?
He's at the top of the range.
At the new range? I'm sorry.
No, the old rate.
With the new range, where are we?
Dave Simpson, you talking about Dave Simpson?
Yes.
Yeah, he's at the top of our current range, $110,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Scott. I was hoping you could touch base on what we discussed at the Civil Service meeting, that this was approved, concerning the salary ranges for directors throughout the city of Waterbury.
Yeah, absolutely. Recommending a salary range is as much of an art as it is a science. We primarily rely on CCM. They do a statewide salary survey, so we go to them as our source. They're the most trusted source that we could use for salary ranges. Occasionally, we'll go out and we'll contact the cities when it's difficult. For example, the last one we did was for attorneys. They vary vastly from city to city. So we actually had to go out and get copies of collective bargaining agreements and things like that. But what I try to do when I set a salary range is to be realistic across a couple of different spectrum. Number one, I wanted to be a position that I set the salary thinking about where are applicants going to come from? We have police departments in every town and municipality. We have fire departments in every town and municipality. They're very similar in nature. The salary structures are very similar. You get to some of the outliers, like, you know, in the Fairfield County area and some affluent towns. But in a case like here with the Director of Public Works, if you looked at my analysis, you can see that what I looked at, I didn't look at ranges, I looked at current salaries of sitting public work directors. And you can see that the average of those individuals is $138,000. That was the average. I didn't even, I didn't even want to look at the ranges, because you could just imagine if the ranges were 15% to 20% one way or the other on the average, it's going to be significantly higher. So anyway, what I try to do is, when I do this, is craft a range that, number one, is going to be something that we can use to attract talent if and when a job becomes vacant. And number two, I can't, I can't separate that from our current management pay plan structure, where I have a fire chief and a police chief making $150,000. I could very well have recommended a salary for the Director of Public Works of $160,000 and probably be spot-on. But realistically, in the city of Waterbury, I try to make it so that all of the peer directors in this city are somehow comparable in regards to directors in this city are somehow comparable in regards to what do they do, what is their job, what does that entail? And basically, the fire and the police chief end up on top for obvious reasons, and then it goes down from there. And we just recently raised the fire and the police chief salaries. I believe it was last year, $250,000 is the top salary. So I try to take what's out there. I try to make sure that it's rich enough to be able to attract talent, but not too rich that it won't get passed here, number one, but that it's in concert with what this body has already passed as other salaries for other department heads in the city.
Thank you, Scott. And this doesn't, if we pass this tonight, Mr. Simpson's not going to get a raise tomorrow.
Well...
Though we all agree that Dave Simpson probably does deserve a raise, it just expands that range.
Well, just for everyone's edification, all of, I'm not sure of all, but the vast majority of all of the job titles on the management pay plan are three-year employment contracts. So they require, I mean, it's not just, you know, a sign-off on a document. There's contracts that have to be written. So it's a little bit of a process. It's not going to, they won't get a raise tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
But the other thing, too, to keep in mind, though, in this particular case, we have two people who are acting deputy directors of Public Works, and their salaries are bumping up against the current salary range. So I have to take that into consideration, too. I want to make sure that we attract our internal applicants to our positions and not force them to look elsewhere for jobs.
And that's part of what we were experiencing with fire last year, I recall.
Yeah, so I have to try to balance all of those things and keep them in mind for the best interest of the city.
Thank you again, Scott.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item Three, can I entertain a motion to refer item number three to Corporation Council so a ordinance can be drafted?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. This will be referred to Corporation Council. Item Six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve, excuse me, approve a proposed sale of city surplus property, 12 Easton Avenue and 787 North Main Street, vacant parcels, to La Iglesia de Dios Incorporated, as submitted by Mike LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to start off with a discussion. So just through the RFP, just because I don't want anybody to feel cheated, the RFP, how long is an RFP out there for this piece of property?
Dan Page, in this role, Surface Community Development Planner for the city of Waterbury, there's a minimum of two weeks that you can have an RFP out. We left this one open for five weeks. We extended it. Any part of those five weeks, you can submit your proposal.
Okay, and once the bid is made, it goes through, clears all the channels, clears the tax, background check?
Yes.
It's approved, and there's nothing of a board we can do to stop it.
Correct.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? Alderman Matthews?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, for recognizing me. I do have one quick question. Because of this being basically a 501(c)(3) that's going to be taking it over, wouldn't it be, I think, as a city and being an elected official, that I would prefer for a business that is going to be paying taxes on a regular basis to have a possibility of having this property and then over a 501(c)(3), because we're getting one lump sum check and that's it. We're one of the businesses that are in that area. If they decide they wanted to have it, we would be getting rent for the space for those parking spaces, we'd be getting money off of it, off that lot.
Sure, so we kept that into consideration when we had posted this out for RFP. So we had contacted, we had received two or three written requests for this property to go out to an RFP process. Once that happened, we had notified the interested parties. We'd posted a sign and we received, and the one that's actually going through tonight for your consideration was the only response that we received over the five weeks that it was out. And so that, along with the fact that we thought it was a good fit, and that, again, there were no other considerations over the five-week course, we felt that with the amount of money and lump sum that we were getting, lots don't generate a lot of taxes in general. And so this $2,500 sum that was agreed upon, we felt was a good faith effort, and again, it was the only proposal that we received over the course of five weeks.
Now, there is, so once this is voted on, is there any type of agreement that the businesses that are there that were interested, because it was three parties? That's my district. I know the three parties that were interested in it.
Yep.
Is there some kind of way that they can all sit down and come up to what an agreement to use this lot? Because at the time, the lot was always in question when it was owned by Deluxe and whoever else.
Right.
They were always arguing over who owned, who can park there, or whatever. And you have two, you have a Proving Restaurant, you have a Caribbean Restaurant that's there, that their cars, people, their patrons' cars are constantly getting hit on a regular. And the church is there as well, where their parishioners, their vehicles are being damaged by being parked on the street. So I would just like to see a happy medium for everyone that's involved with this, because it's the district. I want to see stuff going into the district that's working well, as well as Victor, and I'm quite sure is Belinda. But we want people to understand that we all work together. We don't want someone just to say, well, this is what we're going to do, this is what's going to happen, and then the other two parties are taken out of the equation.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, Alderman, and we did have discussions with the church that, you know, it'd be, you know, a good idea to work with your surrounding neighbors because they are your neighbors, you know? And so that, we did bring that up as a consideration for them, you know, once this purchase and sale goes through, you know, they'd be the owners of the lot.
Yes.
But we did bring that up as a consideration for them to think about, because particularly, that part of North Main Street's very congested with parking, on-street parks.
Exactly.
To your point. So they're aware that that's something that we would want them to consider.
Okay.
And so once the purchase and sale goes through, it's their lot, so, you know, it'll be up to them as to how they use it. But we made it pretty clear that, you know, I think the best solution would be for some sort of arrangement to work out with all parties involved.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Dan, I'm going to end the discussion. So just been called our attention that we're going to need to set up a public hearing for this. So whoever gave us the motion and the second, we're going to ask you to withdraw your motion and also second to withdraw, please.
Motion withdrawn.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn for the approval, and I would like to entertain a motion for someone to set up a public hearing in these chambers, February 10th at 6:55 p.m., so that item number six can have a public hearing.
Motion to set up a public hearing for February 10th at 6:30?
6:55.
6:55.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. This will be set up, item six will be set up for February 10th at 6:55 p.m. in these chambers for a public hearing. Standing. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amounts of $7,550.05, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I just did, yeah, yep, yep.
Okay, with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file. Item number two is on consent to approve a salary range adjustment for the Director of Public Works, current salary of $90,000 to $110,000. The recommended new range is $110,000 to $140,000. Item number three is on consent to refer the request for approval for credit allowances for entry-level positions to the Corporation Council to draft the ordinance to submit to this board for which we'll set a public hearing. Item four is on consent to approve a construction contract with J.A. Rosa Construction in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,827,545.50 funded by the Food Service Fund Balance Account, the Waterbury Public Schools. Item number five is on consent to approve an agreement with Dude Solutions, Inc., for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $98,758.75 to provide for facility management systems. Item number six is on consent to set a public hearing with respect to a proposed sale of city surplus property at 12 Easton Avenue and 787 North Main Street, vacant parcels to La Iglesia de Dios, Inc., on February 10th at 6:55 p.m. in these chambers. Old Business, item number two, is on consent to approve a $1 million bond authorization for demolition of abandoned properties. Item, Old Business Three, is on consent to approve a bond authorization for replacement of elevators in city-owned buildings. Old Business Four is on consent to approve a $2 million bond authorization for the Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot. Item number five, Old Business, is on consent to approve a $1.2 million bond authorization for roof replacement at Generali Elementary School. Item number six is on consent to approve a $3 million bond authorization for road improvements, milling and repaving of streets. And Old Business, item number seven, is on consent to approve a $625,000 bond authorization for fire vehicle replacement, fire engine number seven. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to accept the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none. Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item number six.
New Business Item Number Six? New Business Item Number Six?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as read with the exception of New Business Item Number Six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as read with the exception of New Business Item Number Six, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to New Business Item Number Six, the Chair would recognize Alderman DiGio Von Carlo as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
New Business Item Number Six? That was the public hearing for the sale of the property?
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman set a public hearing on 2/10, 6:55 p.m. in these chambers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Kula, seconded by Alderman Weaver. Is there any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just need a clarification. Mike, if you can. So item number six went from requesting the approval of the sale to scheduling a hearing. Are you requesting that we schedule a hearing, or is this pertaining to any city ordinance?
So the reason for the change is that the ordinance requires, before we can sell city property, that we have to have a public hearing, and we just missed it in setting the approval. So we have to set the public hearing for February, the next meeting would be February 10th.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve setting a public hearing on February 10th at 6:55 p.m. for the proposed sale of the city's surplus property at 12 Easton Street and 787 North Main Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and the public hearing is scheduled. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman DiGio Von Carlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $7,550.05, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Kula, seconded by Alderman Weaver to approve the refunds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. The refunds are approved. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. We'll see you all on February 10th. Thank you.